Welcome to the April 16, 2013 budget hearing. Is today the fourteenth or the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. I said April sixteenth.
You said the fifteenth, sir.
Well, I apologize. Welcome to the April 16, 2013 budget hearing. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. This time, we'd ask that you observe a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas, as well as for the victims of the Boston Marathon bombing. Thank you and good evening. Reminder, we actually have two separate meetings happening this evening. The first will be the budget hearing, which will go from 6:30 to 7:00. If we finish early, we still will not start the school committee meeting until 7 o'clock, so we may take a short break if time permits. We will start the second session of the school committee at 7 o'clock. During the first session for the public budget hearing, Christine Bufagna will present. We will allow folks to publicly comment. There will be a time limit. No response will be forthcoming on the comments from folks. School committee members are welcome to come down and present and comment at that time. They may also later during the second session of the budget, excuse me, of the school committee meeting, comment from their seats as well. With that said, we're going to begin. We welcome Christine Bufagna from our budget office to begin.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about... Good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about the fiscal year 2014 proposed budget. We have prepared a proposed budget that serves over 500 more students than last year, based on 100% net school spending. We are simultaneously managing declines in grants, including a 10% reduction in federal no child left behind grants, Title I and Title II Part A, due to sequestration. Our investments are focused on those areas we think will have the greatest impact on increasing student achievement for the students of Lawrence. We have prioritized funding to meet the objectives of the district turnaround plan. We have prioritized six core investments critical to increasing student achievement. The first one is expanding learning time and student enrichment. 200 to 300 additional hours of instruction next year for all students in grades 1 through 8. Continue acceleration academies during school vacations. Number two, data-driven instruction. Continue school coaching for data-driven instruction, example Anet. Number three, talent recruitment and retention. Implement the new teacher career ladder. Create new leadership roles for teachers. Expand successful school models. Number four, special ed and student support services. Implement the easy IEP software to streamline and improve the IEP process. Engage a consulting firm to review special ed operations to improve services and outcomes. Number five, parent and community engagement. Open the family welcome center and strengthen parent engagement. Expand and deepen partnerships with community agencies. And finally, number six, Common Core curriculum. Support implementation of the Massachusetts Common Core curriculum standards. We have also focused this budget to key on key infrastructure requirements. Facilities, IT, and transportation. Facilities, we're going to continue repairs, renovations, and replacements from years of deferred maintenance. Ensure new school partners, the LTU Partnership School and Up Academy Oliver, so they can start school in clean, safe buildings. We're going to examine new IT systems to streamline and improve HR and financial processes, with target to begin implementation at the end of next school year. And finally, we're going to re... We've reissued the bid for contracted transportation services. Next steps. This proposed budget is presented to the mayor at the end of this month, who will then recommend the funding level to the city council. The city council will review in May or June for a final vote by the end of June. This fiscal year for this budget will begin July 1st. An upcoming work that we still have to do. Finalize extending learning time plans with schools, including school schedules and partnerships. Ensure a successful opening this fall for new and existing schools. Continue discussions with the LTU on proposed new contract and compensation model in order to attract, retain, and reward our best teachers. Engage a consulting firm to develop recommendations for central office support in a decentralized school system. This will be dependent on our final net school spending funding level. The first phase of new organization will be implemented at the end of this school year. And then finally, we've just attached a colorful graph, which basically shows you the funding level of fiscal year 13, which we're currently in, and our projection to fiscal 14. This is going to... This budget meets our net school spending obligation to the state, and this is how we've aligned each of the three core parts of the budget. Operating, fix, costs, and salaries.
We'd remind folks that these numbers are somewhat tentative. Things have not shaken out yet on Beacon Hill, as they typically do not. The process has to move forward, after which point, when a final number is determined later this year, then the city will determine what allocation we get. So, much like last year, we came, we presented to you kind of a best guess of what was going to happen going forward. That is a similar presentation tonight, and we will, of course, update you as these numbers get finalized and hardened. This time, we're going to move to public comments. Any folks that would like to comment publicly may do so at this time. Ms. Malone, do we have a list? We'll take the budget public comments first.
Mr. Riley, I have a question about procedure.
Yep.
So if we were to ask questions, that what point is that?
You can come down and do public comment down here, and then when we move later to the school committee meeting, much like last year, you guys can ask questions.
Good evening, honorable members. My concern as a parent and a citizen by observing the new budget of Lawrence Public Schools is that based on the turnaround plan and involvement of our community, many of our parents are the second language. English is our second language. And in the era of the turnaround plan, our parent cannot participate effectively in success accomplishment of their children and helping their children. We, as a citizen, I request you appropriate some fund as far as parental learning or teaching English as a second language. That has been very important. In some area, the parent are willing or like to help their children with their homework, but they cannot help. Another concern we have always in this time, the era of the budget, our teachers are asking, are they coming back to the school in September? We want to know that our teacher being supported in the new budget and the new turnaround plan, because they are most important fundamental reason for success of our turnaround plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any school committee members that would like to come and comment publicly?
Yes.
Mr. Vittorio So.
I see here that... Ms. Van Feden always does a good job, but I see the budget in 2013 is $150.2 million, and in 2014, it jumps up to $159.9, which is an increase of $9.7 million. Now, I've been preaching that by the year 2020, I don't know if I'll be here, you're going to have a school budget of $200 million. The money's not going to come from the poor, poor residents of Lawrence. It's going to come... And you're going to see a doldrum down in the state, or so I can see it. You're going to see a doldrum down there. And in this thing that Ms. Van Feden so nicely did in blue and red, it says the salaries are 108%. They've gone over 100%. I never thought that would be possible. I'm not saying the teachers don't deserve it. I wish I had made more money as a teacher, but something has to be done. When you've got a budget of 159... It proposed like Mr. Riley said. That's an increase of $9.7 million from one year. And then you go down there, I don't know if you people have it. You come down to salaries 108%. That's 8% over 100. Now, I was a teacher for 37 years. I'm sorry, I'm going to go on for a little bit while, but thank you for telling me I'm over time. I was a teacher for 37 years, and I enjoyed every minute. But when you've got 108%, the people are going to come and kill you. And they better not kill me, because I'm going to lock my doors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. V. Okay, this concludes...
Mr. Riley, can I just get a clarification?
Yes.
That's 108 million dollars.
That's correct.
Correct, not percent.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, that is relating to the longer school day that teachers will be asked to do, as well as we've fixed, we've put in cost for raises. For the first time in three or four years, the teachers will be getting a raise.
Thank you.
Okay, this concludes the budget hearing portion of the meeting. We're going to shut down and start the school committee portion at 7 o'clock, which is in about 11 minutes. Thank you all. Welcome to the April 16, 2013 regular session of the school committee. Meeting starts today at 7 o'clock. We're going to dive in with your permission to item number two. Communication and reports. Under share the success, we're pleased to announce that several of our students have won awards for their artwork and their ability. In particular, Alyssa Salas has won a National Art Award. There was a small video produced that you can watch on the screen about some of the artwork and the students who have been selected.
My name is Alyssa Salas, and I'm a junior in performing and fine arts at Lawrence High School. And I was awarded with Nationals for Scholastic Art Awards. Scholastic Art Awards is a contest where kids in schools submit their pieces, and you can win regionals. You can win a gold, silver, or honorable mention. I actually won gold and silver key for two pieces. And then the gold key pieces, they get evaluated to go into the national round, which you, when you win, you can also receive scholarship money for college that you want to go to. The gold piece is called Forgotten Path. I was actually recording something for my friend. We were shooting a music video. And I was walking down some stairs, and they looked really like grimy and old. And I snapped the picture of my feet, because the whole, like... The whole scene was just like perfect for a photo. I got into photography when I was nine years old. My brother brought me to a film shop, and there was... He bought me my first film camera. And he would just drive around Lawrence, and I would just stick my head out the window and just snap like anything that I found interesting. And that's how I developed, like just taking pictures of like city sceneries and just everyday life type of stuff. And it's stuff like we see every day, you know? But I also like incorporated an art type of feel into it. I feel like I developed on my own with it, and I've seen like over the years. I never used to like doing portraits of people, but now I find myself more taking pictures of like people's profiles and like different stuff other than city life, progressing in different categories, like different areas in my field. Right now, I'm... I want to do my own opening in Lawrence, because it's where I'm from, and I want to share it with my community. It feels great, like I'm really humble about it, because I don't like to be like, oh, yeah. But it feels really great. Like my teachers are great supporters. They're always, you know, like pushing me to do well in academics and art, because it's like hard to balance out sometimes. But it's great. I like that my community knows what I'm doing, and it's for them as well, so it's a good connection. Always try, always try, and always go for it, because there's... You have nothing to lose, basically. And your outcome is probably good if you have a positive mentality about it. So just always try, always go for it, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Picasi. Congratulations again to all the winners. We'd remind the school committee that we will be having our first citywide art show later this spring, probably in early June, at the high school, featuring all Lawrence Public Schools. That is being led by Heather Langelore and other faculty members of the art department. We hope that you will come to that event. Moving on, in our update section, we have a facilities update. As you know, we like to come before you and let you know of some of the facilities work that's been ongoing in this district, trying to prevent more catastrophic repairs by doing the maintenance that needs to get done and has been deferred for almost a decade. At this point, we'd like to ask Chris Molino to come up and share his update, which I think is also in video form today.
Get out of here. Good evening, school committee members. Tonight, we're going to present a brief video of the upcoming projects, and then we're going to... Also on the video, we'll be showing you some of the projects that have been completed. Upcoming projects at the Oliver School. Scraping and plastering of all ceilings and hallways. Painting classrooms, hallways, staircases, bathrooms, and ceilings. Replacing hallway floors with low-maintenance rubber flooring. New rubber stair threads on all staircases. Replace bathroom petitions with a phenomenal petition. New furniture for staff and students throughout the school. Build the radiator covers. Plumbing, electrical, and door upgrades as needed throughout building. New window shades on all windows. Install new whiteboards in all classrooms. Exterior maintenance, including fence repair, window replacement, repointing of exterior brick, graffiti removal, and landscaping. At the Breen School, upcoming projects will be replace first-floor carpet with low-maintenance rubber floor. Replace two gas-fired boilers. At the Brew School, we will be replacing two gas-fired boilers, replacing all windows. North Common Education Complex, we will be replacing the first-floor existing tile with low-maintenance rubber floor. Repointing of the exterior maintenance scenario. Replace overhead loading dock door. Let's take a look at some of the renovations accomplished in the past year.
Obviously, that work continues, and we will continue to ask Mr. Molino to come up and provide updates. Any questions of Mr. Molino for now?
Yes. Evidently, nothing was done to these schools until Mr. Riley got here. That's what it looks like. They've gone in disrepair for years. Now, nothing against you to... We have to thank Mr. Riley and the children, and the parents have to thank, because nothing was done until this man got here. If a homeowner didn't do repairs on his house, like the Lawrence Public Schools, their house would be in disrepair. And I'm not blaming you, Mr. Molino. This man is responsible. You had all these things for years and years, and nothing was done until Mr. Riley got here. And I'm not haranguing you, because you weren't in charge. No homeowner could do what the facilities of Lawrence Public Schools had happened to them. Because, let's face it, if it wasn't for the man you're sitting next to, these schools would have been disrepair. And the people in Lawrence owe him. He's the one responsible for it, no one else. You got all these repairs, and you gave a beautiful picture here, and I was very impressed. My only question is, why did it take so damn long? And I'll repeat as the final... Oh, hi, David. You... What's the matter?
Want to make sure we hear you.
Oh, of course, so I can get crucified. Now, if homeowners did what the Lawrence Public Schools did before Mr. Jeffrey Riley was appointed receiver, you would have hundreds of millions of dollars in repairs. And it's nothing against you, because you weren't here. My only question is, why did it wait so long? And why did it have to have Mr. Riley come in here and push for all these things? That's my only question, and I'll repeat for the 3,000th time. If homeowners did what the Lawrence Public Schools did prior to Mr. Riley getting here, you would have a lot of junk houses.
Mr. V, we're not here to cast aspersions on anyone in the past. We recognize that the country was going through a depression, for lack of a better word, for a long time. What we recognized quickly, however, when we came in, was that things needed to be fixed, or we were going to have a larger problem on our hands. And that work continues. I don't want anyone to think that we're out of the woods yet, because there are other projects that must get done to prevent a large-scale problem on our hands. So that work continues. We appreciate all the efforts that Mr. Molino and his staff have done, and we will continue to update you.
I have... Excuse me, I have a question. Chris, the rubber floor that is going in in the hallways of the schools...
Yes.
What's the maintenance like with that?
It's maintenance-free. There's no stripping or waxing of the floor.
No auto scrubber?
Just auto scrubber and basic neutral cleaner, but there's no upkeep as far as stripping and waxing the floor.
Okay.
I think you've both done a hell of a job, but I got to reiterate. The man you're sitting next to doesn't want to get any kudos. I get all the kudos I can and put them in my bag. He is mainly responsible for it. I don't care who knows. I'm going to say it. I don't think it would have been done until Mr. Riley was here. And again, for the 15th time, if house owners took care of their property, like the Lawrence Public Schools prior to this gentleman getting here, there'd be a lot of junk housing in Lawrence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee?
Graffiti on the schools, I know it's prevalent in our city. How bad is it, and is it being... Like, is it being kept up with, or...
It is pretty bad. We are currently working to purchase a piece of equipment so we could do it in-house with our custodial staff. Currently, we depend on the DPW. With their large volume of graffiti throughout the city, it's very hard for them to keep up. So we are now looking at a piece of equipment to take on our schools and maintain it ourselves.
Is it just like a whitewasher, or is it...
It's a steam pressure washer, gas-fired on back of a vehicle, and we use a chemical.
Okay. Thank you.
Any final questions on facilities before moving on?
We only get an update on the Gilmet.
The Gilmet bids are out. They currently close, I believe, the end of this week or the beginning of next week. Once the bids come back, we'll be sitting down with the city attorney, who's representing the Gilmet School, and going over all bids.
May I further add, Mr. Molino, you weren't there. I retired from that great school up on the hill. You had, during the winter, you had frost coming in from the windows. You had the boiler downstairs. Whoever the clerk of the work was, and I know nothing about it, should be harassed and sued, because that school wasn't even 10 years old. You had a mold problem, which shut down, cost an extra $500,000, I think. Then you had a problem with the company. They wanted more money. It was, in my opinion, ecological disaster, the Gilmet School. And children shouldn't have to go to school, and teachers shouldn't have to go to school. Many of the teachers come up coughing and wheezing. The children coughing. Maybe it's an ecological disaster, because everybody knows it was shut down here, shut down there. Maybe, and you can't go backwards, maybe the clerk of the works and the others didn't do their job properly. Thank you.
I would say, Mr. Vittorio So, that certainly there were problems with that school from the inception. The problems have been remediated, so it is a safe place for... The problems have been remediated, so it is a safe place for children and staff to go to. But there is more work that needs to be done based on the lack of work that was done before on some of the systems. So I know that's been approved. Obviously, that was something that happened before we came in. But we want to make sure that it is done right and fixed the right way so that the taxpayers feel that they got their money's worth.
May I say finally, you're being very generous with your words of praise and you're being very generous, Mr. Riley. It's a new thing I have to think about, your generosity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Molino. This time, we'd ask the high school headmaster, Michael Walter, to come up to discuss the 2013 LHS graduation of which you all are invited and will be invited to. Do you have a video today, Mr. Walter? Are you just in person?
No video, Mr. Superintendent. Good evening.
Sometimes live is better.
Good evening, School Committee. Good evening. This year, I'd like to propose an outdoor graduation due to population increase at all the schools in, at the high school level. Six campus schools, SES, HLC, plus the out-of-district students from Lawrence. Bring a population of 735 as a number for students possibly graduating in June and in August. Previous year, the number was 660. We had indoor graduation in the fieldhouse. Great graduations, beautiful graduations, something that we can all be proud of. But for safety reasons, if you can remember last year, the place was packed. Place was quiet and, but in the corners of the building, towards the exits, we had people that were standing. And with this, I'm just a little bit worried with the number of students that we have, trying to keep the graduation together, not as independent or separate graduations or north and south graduation on campus. To keep it together as a high school graduation, Lawrence High School graduation. So that's the reason for the proposal.
Questions from the group?
Yes, I think you're doing a hell of a good job. Let me say that out front. Now, I'm going to hop back to a subject I haven't gone over there. Are children still going over to those venues across the street? And have you heard anything from the proprietors of those venues? Like last time you had said, if I'm mistaken, you will correct me, that you had talked to several of them and the students who were going over there. You know, the problem is, if one of them gets hurt, the liability is immense. And Mr. Riley had brought up the thing they were checking. But as I told Mr. Riley, this is not the time you're talking about. I'm talking in between the classes. Now, I haven't gone over there. I won't engage any students. But are students going over during their spares across the street? That's my question.
Well, the answer to your question, as I did the last time, as truthfully as I possibly could, Mr. V, is we have safety officers there. We have people greeting the students. Mr. Rodriguez is one of the people outside in the morning. I'm outside in the morning. We have a couple of other assistant principals that are doing so at the front doors. And also, we have teachers and administrators in the cafeteria. Also, we have safety officers in certain areas of the building and the complex that are trying to stop students from, or trying to avoid this from happening. Does it happen? Yes. Do we, do we say, okay, it's all right, the students leave the campus and say, okay, here's a pass? No, we don't do that type of thing. Of course, we have those conversations with the students every day and we ask all staff members to do so. And if it does happen and we find out, we handle those situations with those students.
It's, I'm not down you because I think you're doing a hell of a good job. But what bothers me, and I haven't gone over there, that highway is a nutty highway. You know, I see the campus students and they're dodging the cars. People driving got to be crazy, okay? The children have the right, but they're speeding down, this and that. And what my biggest fear is, and I proposed this to Mr. Riley several months ago, the liability involved. You know, we get a lot of suits going on in the city. I know personally, this one, this one, that one, the suit. You've got lawyers that make thousands and thousands of dollars on suits. And I am interested, and I'm sure all my other members, I'm speaking for them, they can speak for themselves. We, I am, and I hope they are concerned about safety of these students. And even if you've got one, Mike, who goes over and gets hit, the city can't afford this. You've got these lawyers out there just waiting. And it's a problem and I really don't have an answer for the solution because I'm not over there. I haven't gone over there. Around three, four months, I go over and have my chicken sandwich and I see these students coming in. And like I told you and Mr. Riley, I will not approach them. It's not my job to approach, but it is my job to inform Mr. Riley and you that that is occurring. And it's a problem, in my opinion.
I agree with you again on the safety issue. And I think that every one of our staff members, we use this in those conversations that I was talking about before. And of course, with that, we try to limit the numbers as far as that are leaving the campus. But is it happening? Again, to answer you, yes, it does happen. And do we address it? Yes, we do.
I think it's fair to say, Mr. V, that Mr. Walter and his staff have put together some serious safeguards in place to reduce dramatically from what it used to be. But students are students, kids are kids, and it's something we have to watch very carefully. We take the safety of our children. It's of the utmost import to this administration and to the teachers and principals in the school system. Many of you know that there were some days when we canceled school. Although the schools had been shoveled out, the sidewalks had not been. And so we canceled school because we did not want our children to walk on many of those busy streets. As you know, my chief of staff was hit in the crosswalk. We've had students hit in the past. And it's something that we will continue to work on.
I think you're both doing the best you can, but it's that minority of minorities giving trouble and bring disgrace upon the whole student body and the fine administrators and teachers in that school. Mr. Riley, I never would have voted for putting the school there, first of all. I think you know, I feel they shouldn't have been put there, but it's there and we got to live with what we have, sir.
The work continues, Mr. V. Mr. Piana?
Yes, I have a few questions. Some of them, well, just to be on that stuff, just so I understand. So like, no student is allowed to go to, let's say Dunkin' Donuts or something during their lunchtime or something? I don't know this.
No, it's a closed campus, Mr. Piana.
Okay.
They're not even to do so with pass from an administrator. The only way they'd be able to do so is written notice from a parent saying that they have to leave for a professional appointment.
Okay, in that case, then I would say then it is somewhat of an issue because every time I've stopped by, I have seen students do that walk. I just, I just figured it was like their lunchtime and they were, and the school was fine. I didn't think it was a little strange, but anyways, I have a few questions. One of them is regarding the subject that you actually came here to talk to us about. So what happens, so the last time that we had an outdoor graduation, it was actually beautiful. I remember it was at least the last time that I went to one. It was a beautiful day. What happens if it rains?
That's the chance we're taking, Mr. Piana. But it's the numbers that we're going with and so that all families can enjoy. Not cutting out some members of families and leaving some go to the paxton to watch it on the big screen. This is so that they can all enjoy the graduation.
But there is a rain date.
And plus, there is a rain date.
Okay.
June 9th would be the Sunday graduation at 12 o'clock. And also, the rain date is Monday at 6 o'clock.
What was the time again on the 9th?
It would be 12 noon.
Thank you. My other questions, I don't know if I should hold off to that. I don't know if the rest of the committee members have questions about graduation. Okay, so I'll hold off on my questions.
Rain date will be for what day?
The next day.
Would be the next day, Monday, Monday, the 10th at 6 o'clock?
At 6 o'clock.
I just want to say thank you. I appreciate that we still have one graduation at Lawrence High School. It's having three Lawrence High School graduates up here, I think that all of us appreciate it. I mean, having six separate high schools was an odd concept to myself. But I think that having one graduation from Lawrence High School, from Lawrence, is an important thing that we have and I appreciate it.
You know, my other, my other questions is regarding, now, this is, I talked to a few juniors from Lawrence High School. I was like, maybe like three or four. So I don't know what the actual student body, you know, what kids are doing in the student body. But I was asking about SATs. And none of them, like, they weren't kids, I mean, they were smart kids, taking maybe like one honors class and the rest, you know, kind of like a mixed bag between honors and academics. But they weren't too knowledgeable about what the SATs were or what type of programs the school had available for them. Which, it worried me a little bit just because by the time ending of sophomore year, I was already prepped, you know, going to a summer program that was going to help me with my SAT. So I'm just wondering what, and I heard about a program that the school has, but I think this is, you know, a good public setting for you to discuss, what type of programs either are available or the school provides that students might be able to partake in. I don't know if you have that information with you.
Were you involved in the Let's Get Ready program, Mr. Piana?
No, I was not. I was part of a UMass Lowell program.
I knew that you were somewhere a little bit afterwards. We just had that program proposed to us by Mr. Steve Wanyak. We just didn't have, it was supposed to be run from 4:00 to 7:00 at the high school during the summer, a couple of days a week. He was looking for, he was looking for space in the school system. At that time, when I had spoke to him, that space was minimal because of the aggressive cleaning schedule that we had set up for the summer. I'm going to see if I can get back to him. They were supposed to be going over to Notre Dame in Lawrence to see if there was space there in which they could hold the program. Currently, that program is at the Great Lawrence Regional Locational School. They have 35 students that are currently involved in the program. So they had 15 slots that were available to other students.
I think whether it's this program or other programs, we definitely have to figure out how to make them accessible to the youth at the high school. I know that there are some programs out there that do some type of college prep. But for most of them, you have to go in there your freshman year and they only cater to a specific group of people. So if you're not, you know, one of these top kids, you might not be getting some of that help. Or if you are one of the top students, but you didn't enroll your freshman, early sophomore year, you weren't thinking about, you know, college, then you're kind of out of luck. And I remember a lot of my friends going through high school, we got some college, like, type of SAT prep at our, with our English teachers. And I think at that time, there was an actual class that taught SAT prep. I don't know if that's still, still there. But it's just things that we should be considering, just, it's great that we're graduating so many people. I want to make sure that these, all these students have an opportunity to go to a UMass Lowell or UMass Amherst.
There is an SAT prep built into the schedule at the high school and we would encourage any students to see Mr. Rodriguez or their guidance counselor for more information. But clearly, we need to do a better job of getting the word out. Any other questions, Pat?
Mike, just a question that occurred to me. Will the graduates still have the opportunity to invite a teacher in their past that has meant a lot to them or had helped them?
Yes, that's still part of the program.
Because that's very powerful and, you know, being on the receiving end of getting one of those letters from a student and, you know, that invitation to the graduation, that's very, very nice.
Thank you. That was incorporated about three or four years ago. Thank you.
Any final questions for Mr. Walter? Thank you, Mr. Q.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Thank you all.
To family engagement update with Pat Mariano?
Okay, since our last meeting, we attended the Wetherby and the Hennessy. I was at the Wetherby and I'm very happy to report, there were probably 60 to 70 parents there. They were very receptive to the PowerPoint. The questions were very, very good and overall, it was a great evening. My peers that would like to report on the Hennessy, I wasn't there.
Why don't you start off, Mr. Serrola, then Jimmy, then myself? The Hennessy School, sir?
Hennessy School, we had about 30, about 30 to 40 parents. They're, they're very receptive of the presentation. I actually jumped in with Mr. V and Mr. Blatchford to join them. But Mr. Blatchford did the whole program. He's going to talk about it.
Thanks. We, we had obviously a lot of questions from parents. It was very well received. We gave all of them our contact information, Mr. Riley's contact information. So if they had any additional questions, they could reach out to us. And they're, I think it was a relief from some of the parents because a lot of them just haven't had the full, this is exactly what the plan has done. And so it really put some of them at ease, understanding what's going to happen, especially for the Hennessy since their kids would be moving on to upper grades, how, how the schools will be functioning, especially with, I think it's the Bruce and the Gilmet that Hennessy moves on to and kind of the facilities updates and things like that. So it, hopefully, it puts some of the parents at ease and if they had any other questions, obviously, they can get back to us, so.
Which reminds me, there was a question of some kids weren't being challenged enough at the, at the Hennessy.
Well, it was Gilmet, I believe, it was the.
At the Gilmet. One of the parents had her kids at the Gilmet and she felt the kids weren't being challenged enough, that everything was being geared towards kids that were having problems. So we need to start looking at better ways to engage the kids that are high, doing, doing better in the school, are high-achieving students.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Mr. V.
This woman that Mrs. Serrola's talking about is definitely a parent that I would like to see more. She's interested, she has two kids. And her question was, and it's a good question, are my kids being challenged enough? Now, parents got to realize, if you've got a class of 30 kids, they don't all have the same ability. Now, her kids seem to be high-functioning and she was wanting to know why these kids had to be taught. The other kids were, in other words, holding them back. And I tried to explain to her, and she's a nice lady, that all kids don't come to the table with the same qualifications. She was very, very knowledgeable and she was very uptight about her kids getting an education. The parents asked many questions. I think there were more than what my partner Jim said there, they were saying. I think there was around maybe 50 to 60 parents there. And some of the questions they asked are beautiful. You had this one gentleman here who was a Spanish gentleman. He asked a million questions. He asked a million questions. I said, slow down, and then he went into the English mode. He was fluent in both. What I see going out to these schools, I see parents that are interested in their kids succeeding. And the only way they're going to succeed is through the Lawrence Public Schools. And that amazes me. You've got many parents there. They all there for one thing. They want their kids to be successful. And the question is, and the problem is, how do you make all the kids whose parents wanted to be successful, successful? They don't come to school with all the same equipment mentally and everything else. You have, in America, I think, we teach towards the middle class, the C students. And it's very hard for an A student and a D student to be in that realm. And that's something I think that all school systems have to work on. But I am myself and my two colleagues, I was very impressed by the number of people, parents, who came there. They're interested in the education of their children. They know that education is their only chance their kids got of making a very good living and not have to work in these mills like my parents did. And I'm very impressed that Mrs. Mariano made all these schedules here because I see that parents want to get involved. You've just got to get programs and times that they will come. I was very impressed with the Hennessy and I was very impressed with the Lady School. And I was thrilled. I haven't been thrilled in 12, 14... I haven't been thrilled in twelve, fourteen years being on the school committee here. But these two schools and their parents, they have one thing in common. They want their kids to be successful. And it's up to Mr. Riley, the administrators and the teachers and everybody else to ensure the dream of the parents is transferred to the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. V, and I want to thank the members of the school committee for taking time out of their very busy lives. I appreciate all the efforts they've made on behalf of the school system to get the plan out there.
Superintendent, I just wanted to let you know that we will be in the next couple of weeks visiting three more schools.
Great.
And I want to thank members of the committee who, who have embraced this, this notion of going out and meeting the parents. I think it's something that we need to continue doing. We need to be out there and we need to be accessible to the parents and bring them into the schools. So I want to thank you too, Superintendent, for giving us the opportunity to do that.
They're out there, Patricia. May I add to you and the superintendent, they're out there. They want to be invited into the schools. And I do hear from several of them, again, hopping on the upper echelon. They're not treated someone with respect. They think they're due when they go onto certain schools. That's all I'll say.
Actually, I want to thank Pat for putting together the presentation and doing, spearheading the efforts of making the schedules, contacting the schools and setting up the schedules for us to go out to the schools.
Thank you.
Yeah, she does a good job, an excellent job.
Thank you all. I know that folks might have had some questions about the budget. We'd like to ask Ms. Pufagni to come back up before we move to public participation.
Mr. Piana goes first and I'll go after him. Go ahead, Mr. Piana.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm the chair. I'm the chair, sir.
I just have a couple of questions. One of the questions we were having after the summer break between meetings, what, what is the difference between operating costs and fixed costs? I know on page forty-seven, one of the things is discussed, it kind of gives a breakdown of what fixed costs are. So we were confused about what operating costs could be.
Well, on page three of your budget document, it sort of outlines the budget format. It gives you the detail behind fixed costs, which are basically utilities, employee benefits, leases, insurance and special ed tuitions.
There you go. Look at that, right in the beginning. My next question is, okay, so I was flipping through, and maybe it's just my packet. I couldn't find the central office breakdown. I feel like in the past, they were, they were there before. Did other, I don't know if other people.
Well, central office is on every budget summary page. It has a line item. And it's, I think, page forty-seven and forty-eight, it breaks down central office. Forty-eight into the categories we talked about. But again, on the summary pages, on eight and nine, if you see at the bottom, there's central office.
Sorry. Let me just go to eight and nine. Okay, so page forty-eight, that's, gotcha. I just, it didn't have a title, so I wasn't sure. All right, and my next question is around, oh, I saw that in certain places. There was a significant increase in salary. I'm just wondering how much of that is just like your regular increase that happens, you know, every year and like it, are we, it's just, are we going to get like a more new employees? Like, I'm just trying to figure out what the breakdown in that was.
So there's a lot going on in that area. I think, you know, we talked about the, the projected addition of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty new students. Obviously, that will necessitate that we hire additional teaching staff, which is a large expense for us. We also have changed the compensation system. Some folks have come in to hear more about that. Where, you know, we're looking to reward our best teachers, kind of retain our best people, attract great people. For the first time in three or four years, there will be a salary increase for teachers. That's built into that. And then the final piece is additional funding for a longer school day. Part of the turnaround plan asks for students in K through eight to have a longer school day and as such, that requires us to compensate the teachers as well.
Do you have any idea now how many new staff you think you might be hiring?
It's, it's a little bit too early to say, but we will be coming back to you with more information in May and June as kind of things congeal, both from Beacon Hill and from our own projections with kids. But obviously, anytime you're talking of the magnitude of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty more children, that is not a small amount of teachers that are going to be needed.
I think one of the questions that Mr. Piana has is that we don't have a breakdown of employees for central office like we did in the past.
That's true.
Where we have, told us how many clerks we were having, having central office and so forth.
You know, I think I've been pretty clear with folks that we will be reducing central office in order to put more resources out to the schools. There will be, depending on what happens with our funding from the city and from Beacon Hill, there could be even deeper cuts. We've alerted people in the central office to that. But I want to be clear with people that my job is to protect the sanctity of the classroom and the individual schools. And, you know, we had always slated to reduce central office costs. And, but they may be even more greatly reduced based on what happens with this budget if we are, again, not afforded the full one-hundred percent net school spending formula.
I guess, it's just a confusion, just like the way central office was kind of set up. I think I, I would just like to see sort of that information, maybe it's there and I'm just not looking at it. Because I'm like, I'm looking at.
This is the part, this is the part you're looking for.
Right.
That's what we had before.
Yeah, no, but it also, if we look at some of the other stuff, it breaks it down FY twelve, FY thirteen and FY fourteen.
I think it might be helpful for us to come back in May or June after we see kind of what the final numbers are and can give you that more detailed information because then we'll know exactly how deep we had to cut into central office. And we can give you that breakdown. We're more than happy to.
For, when, when it is represented to us, one, one thing I requested, just purely because I just like to see the increase on, on the numbers, especially for each individual school. We have projected FY twelve, sorry, FY fourteen enrollment, but we don't have last year's. So if we could add that number, just purely so we could say that this school's getting five hundred more students. Sorry, not, not exaggerated, but obviously. The other question I had, we have an increase of six million dollars in central office. What, what is that specifically going to?
It's going to the benefit packages, operating costs for some of our partnerships that we're looking for, ELT, utilities. It's basically in the fixed costs. And then you can see on page forty-eight, we just broke out the salaries. It's for school-based personnel, the extended time.
So that money is mostly going towards at the schools versus we're not increasing central office.
The school base extended?
The two, two and a half million, correct.
Those are teachers in paraprofessional stipends.
Um, for, for the, when, when this gets presented to us again, can we have a breakdown of the, the central office, that six million? Because that, I mean, that's a significant increase of over every, I think that's the biggest number if I'm not mistaken.
We're happy to get you guys more information as this becomes. As I said at the outset of the budget presentation, this is kind of the initial shot across the bow. The numbers are not formed completely yet because we don't have final guidance from Beacon Hill nor from the city. And we will need to adjust, just like we did last year accordingly. And we're happy to provide that information going forward.
My colleague's done?
I am. I, one.
I can see.
Final question. The Oliver School, we have three pages for the Oliver School. We have twenty-six, twenty-five and twenty-four. I, I assume UP Academy is taking over six, seven and eight in future years, correct?
So they're doing, much like they did at the Leonard this year, they're doing sixth grade next year and then the following year, they'll take seven and eight, the whole school.
So Oliver Middle essentially will just be taken out in the next couple of years and just the members will be added.
And then the Oliver L T U Partnership School will move back to the old Oliver building, which is where Mr. Molino needs to do some major repairs. To bring that building up to spec.
And with, with that, does, does the Oliver Middle and Elementary currently have two separate principals? Or is that going to be when they move over, they'll have separate principals?
When they move over, they'll have separate principals.
So that's a.
Most of that will be, by the way, funded by SRG grant money, which we're applying for as a level four school. So there shouldn't be any additional cost to the district for the first three-plus years.
And.
Remember also, however, that the Oliver School has a large influx of kids over the last two years and has gone, I believe, from six hundred students to almost nine hundred students. And it's hard to, it's hard to justify keeping that as one giant school building when it's fallen into level four status.
So after, after that three-plus years, when the funding runs out,
we're going to have to absorb the principal costs. I mean, I think it's just the cost of doing business when the numbers are so high there anyway. It would be, you know, across the district before my arrival, many of these schools, Partham, you know, Gilmette, because of the large numbers, were broken into two for two principals. For us not to do that at the Oliver, I think would create a huge equity issue, given the large numbers of children that have matriculated to that school over the last few years. And again, that's part of the reason why the number is getting higher for us from the state is because of these projected increase of enrollment where the kids, you know, we have a lot of kids that keep coming and our enrollment keeps growing. And some of those dollars obviously are go to things like hiring more teachers when needed, an additional principal and the like.
So principal costs, is that in the salary number for each individual school? Does the principal number come out of central office?
No, the principal is assigned to the budget for that school.
Okay. And I think that's it for me.
Actually. Can you, can you one more time, so what would be operating costs for central office? Because I'm just looking at, like, its textbooks, so it's like office supplies?
We have district-wide curriculum in central office from the CNI department. They do textbook adoptions, like we're just currently doing for the high school, math adoption.
And all that runs through central office? Okay.
So I think going forward, it might be helpful for folks if we kind of broke down what the central office costs were, because I want to be clear, I think the size of central office personnel-wise will be reduced going forward. But some costs, like adopting a new high school math curriculum, after using a curriculum which does not align to the state standards and frameworks nor to the Common Core that's coming and has been out of date for ten years, it's just something that has to be done. Our kids are at a competitive disadvantage and we have to make those curriculum adoptions, not the least of which, because many of the materials are just simply falling apart.
My colleague's done?
For now.
God bless you, God bless you. Now, Mr. Banffigan, now, I'm on page eight. I have several questions of you on page eight. First question would be the community, oh, is this thing, oh, yeah, Community Day Arlington. You're going up for physical twenty, physical, yeah, FY twenty-fourteen. You're going up two-point-six million dollars. Phoenix Academy, you're going up one-point-three million dollars. And the central office, the one that, you must be getting some good pace. You're going up three million dollars in twenty-fourteen. Why such an increase of three million dollars, central office?
Well, central office, again, it's about the fixed costs for the employee benefits, utilities, leases, insurance, payroll taxes, et cetera. Community Day Arlington and Phoenix, they're expanding their enrollment.
So there will be no more Arlington Elementary School. Instead, Community Day is taking that whole budget, which why, which is why the number goes up, but you no longer see an Arlington Elementary budget. So there's no additional cost there. Phoenix, as you know, is expanding to a hundred and seventy-five students next year and two-hundred-and-fifty students the year after. By the way, the district is entitled to additional funding from the state when those students who previously had dropped out return to the school district. So that also is part of the, the gain in the money that we got this year because we are bringing more students back in an attempt to get them across the graduation line.
Good point. Again, on central office, I'm a little bit confused. What else is known with me? You're going from fifty-five million, six-hundred-forty-five thousand, six-hundred, to fifty-eight million, seven-forty-seven, nine oh four. You explained it to me, but I'm having a hard time conceiving. You know what I would like with permission of Mr. Riley? How many people are involved in the central office? And that fifty-eight million, seven-forty-seven, you did say encompasses what?
Fixed costs for the district.
Please don't go too fast. Fixed costs. And what are fixed costs?
Fixed costs include utilities for the district, includes.
No, I'm a little bit confused, Ms. Banffigan. Now, of that fifty-eight million, seven-hundred-forty-seven, the fixed costs are not salaries?
No.
We'll see.
There's three categories, like on page nine, you, you can see three categories of salaries, operations and fixed costs.
Okay. Yeah, I, I see you have to be sort of a CPA to understand this budget process, but my good friend, the vice chair, has pointed out to me, to me, that's a whopping increase. First of all, I would like to know, and I don't expect you to get it from me tonight, maybe I can't get it at all, how many people are involved in this fifty-eight million, seven-hundred-forty-seven, nine oh four? I don't want to know what their salaries are. I want to know how many people are involved. Because it's none of my business, you're making fifty thousand, a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. I just want to know, when you say fixed costs is included in the fifty-eight, seven-forty-seven, what I'm interested in, in salaries, I don't want to know what you make, I don't want to know what your colleagues make. I want to know what the total is. And what confuses me immeasurably is fixed costs are in this fifty-eight million, seven-forty-seven. Out of the fifty-eight million, seven-forty-seven, nine oh four, and I expect you to have an answer now, how much of that fifty-eight million, seven-forty-seven, nine hundred four dollars goes strictly for salaries? Among how many people?
Thirteen million of that is for salaries.
Thirteen million? I always knew you were a brilliant lady, Christine. Now I'm starting to believe it myself. Okay, thirteen million goes for salaries, okay? And the rest of that, thirteen million for that, we're talking forty-five million is other costs?
Thirty-nine point six is fixed costs and five point nine is operations.
You're going too fast, young lady, again. Thirty-nine point six million is what?
Fixed costs.
Give them an example.
Examples, the benefits for the district, payroll taxes.
And we've got to pay the feds. You don't want Obama coming on us. And what's the five million for?
Five point nine is for district-wide curriculum for.
And can you please?
Textbooks.
What that is, district applied curriculum?
Like textbooks and things like that.
Okay. And that textbook covers all English, math, science?
New adoptions to be aligned with the Common Core.
You make a tough team to break up. You've got all the answers. Now, how, how long does a book last for a child? I know when I was in high school, I had books that, I graduated in fifty-eight. We didn't get up to the Second World War, okay? We didn't get it up to the Second War. How long does a textbook last, it, its availability? Say a science book, a math book?
You know, I think on average, Mr. V, you can probably get between five and ten years out of a textbook. One of, one of the problems we are facing as a district, as are all districts in Massachusetts, is we have decided to abandon the Massachusetts State Frameworks and transition to the national Common Core standards. And when you do that, many districts like ours are faced with the task of buying new materials that align with what our students are going to be tested on. You throw into that, you factor in the fact that many students in Lawrence have not had appropriate textbooks for a long time and that these materials are not only out of date, but they are in disrepair. And we have to, over the next several years, adopt new curriculums and bring new materials to our students so that they can remain competitive with the rest of the kids in the state.
I'm going to just ask you a trivia question, just to you.
Oh, boy.
What president lost his mother and his wife in the same year? T.R., Teddy Roosevelt.
Teddy Roosevelt. I did not know that.
You can take that home and show it to your kids and your wife.
Thank you, Mr. V.
So just to be clear, next year's budget, that number's going to be significantly lower because we're buying all these textbooks this year. We're-
No, no. I would say we're doing a math curriculum. We're going to do several adoptions over the next several years as we migrate fully to this Common Core thing. This is probably a three-year endeavor, which is, well, people have a lot of opinions on it. But what I would say is, if our kids are going to be tested on certain material, they need to have the right books in front of them.
If you don't mind me asking, we, in Massachusetts, we're number one in education.
That's correct.
Why are we changing?
You're gonna get me in trouble, Mr. Blatchford, and I have to remember at times like these that I work for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There are debates on whether or not we should be changing. I will not bring my own personal views into that, other than to say that a decision has been made at the state level and all districts are forced to catch up.
Let me ask this question then. Does the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, was this implemented before the new secretary, or was this after?
This was long before the new Secretary of Education came on board. This has been in the works for, you know, five, six years now that this transition to the Common Core was coming.
Okay. And I tend to have a good opinion of our commissioner.
Indeed. My boss, yes.
Being from, well, Secretary of Education, we have, is a former superintendent from Brockton Schools, I mean, I think that-
Matt Malone, yeah.
He understands what urban school districts need, especially districts like Lawrence and Brockton. Does he have an opinion on this? Is it just he's going along with-
I haven't asked. My assumption is, is that, like most superintendents, we recognize several years ago that this was going to happen, the decision was made, and that in order to make sure that our kids remain competitive and we're actually able to answer the test questions, you know, that we migrated towards this new Common Core and adopted curriculum materials that reflected what the students were going to be asked.
Back to the budget on Phoenix. You said it's a grant money, is it a grant or is it just a reward? What's the best way to describe the amount of money that we get from, is it state or federal money?
So it's the state, you know, we get money at the state level based on kids that come back into the school system by October 1st, and it's just a per pupil dollar amount. It's not from the federal government. It's based on the state. And when we do that, then our contribution, the money that comes to the schools increases, obviously, much like it does when we're projecting new students into the district, whether they're coming from other places. We also get funding to be able to pay for the teachers, the principals. I will say, we have not gotten funding to pay for the buildings. And if this trend continues, I want to put the school committee on alert now that over the next several years, we may need additional buildings. Right now, we're okay for next year and probably the year after. But if the surge in population continues, we're going to have to seriously consider our options and next steps for making sure that our kids can be housed appropriately.
That being said, we do lease buildings currently for Phoenix Academy and others. Is there in the works possibly purchasing those buildings, or?
I think it's all on the table right now. We've put out to bid for the Phoenix Academy. You know, I think I wanted to talk to both the school committee, city leadership, and other folks and get a harder number as to, in the next couple of years, on what we're going to do. But I think a consideration as to purchasing buildings may be necessary. Opening up buildings that are not in use or have been shuttered may be necessary. I think we're going to have to leave no stone unturned going forward if this population surge continues.
And that being said, when we lease this building, correct?
We do.
And how long is the lease on this building for?
My understanding is that this is a 10-year lease and the lease is up next year.
Okay. And are we, what's on the table essentially when it comes to?
There's been no discussions. It is something that needs to be discussed by this committee regarding going forward. It is my personal belief that this is an expensive lease and may not be sustainable in the future. There was an opportunity in the past to buy the building. My understanding that was not enacted and people chose not to do it. My belief is that the building probably should have been purchased because, given the amount of the lease, we've bought this building several times over now.
Thank you. Sorry, I apologize. One more question.
Yeah.
Family Welcome Center, are there going to be weekend hours?
We are hoping so, particularly at peak seasons for registration and things like that. We are in the process, we have a group of folks have moved down already to what used to be Human Resources. And so as we get into registration season, we're going to be ironing all that out. And we do hope to provide additional, not just weekend, but evening hours when parents get home from work.
Thank you.
Yes?
Superintendent and Christine, thank you very, very much for your explanation. I'm very impressed with the goals, the budget goals, or I really like the term, your six core investments. I think, you know, in reading them and looking them over, we're investing in kids, finally, in the achievement of kids. I like the order of the goals, and I think as a committee, we should jump on board and really fly with this and support the district in, you know, enacting this budget. The expanded learning time, at some point, Superintendent, once the schedules are all set, will we receive copies of the schedule so we'll know which schools are, how many hours more each school will be open?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
All of that information is forthcoming.
And I think, you know, in looking at this, we're finally leveling the playing field for our kids. And that extended learning is a huge piece. And I want to thank you for putting that in.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any further questions before we move to public participation?
Yeah. Implement a new teacher career ladder. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So we've put a proposal in front of the teachers' union to change the compensation system, moving away from the traditional lanes and steps where teachers, regardless of performance, get an increase in their salary each year they walk into a building. We're now looking to create a model where teachers who are satisfactory or better will move up the career ladder and get a pay raise. But those teachers that aren't performing will not necessarily get a raise on a yearly basis. This proposal, in this proposal, 100% of Lawrence teachers would get a raise compared to last year in year one of the program. 92% of the teachers would do better than they would have under the old lanes and step system. And then going forward, we're looking to use performance as the calculus to determine what teachers should be paid. I want to be clear that this performance system allows for teachers to make more money quicker if they are excelling in their craft and gives folks additional opportunities, leadership opportunities, whether they work over vacations or they're part of a teacher leader cabinet, to earn additional dollars for additional work.
The performance of the students, I assume. So what is that based off? Just MCAS scores and SATs?
No, it's, I think it's primarily driven by teacher evaluations. If a teacher feels that they're being unfairly evaluated, they have an opportunity to have someone outside of their traditional administrator come in and evaluate them. So there is, you know, no one can say, oh, my principal didn't like me. But you can have an objective approach. No system that I know of could actually tie it to test scores because about, maybe between 13 and 17% of our teachers actually have a test score tied to students. Remember, there is no testing in kindergarten, first grade, 11th and 12th grade, history, gym, art. So many of those teachers don't have test scores. When there is data available, we will put that into the evaluation. But overall, it's on an evaluation that's done in accordance with the state standards and is administered by the assistant principals and principals in the building.
How receptive was this?
You know, I think it's too early to say. I don't want to speak for folks. I think we've tried to get a lot of information out. And I think if teachers look at it, they're going to see this is a pretty good opportunity for them to get additional funding and, you know, for extra work and for performance.
Was there a vote on this, or was this just handed to the teachers and said, this is what we're working with, or?
No, this was a proposal that we gave to the teachers' union. We're still talking to the teachers' union about this. We do not feel, based on the statute and the state law attached to receivership, that we have to bargain. But we're trying to make a good faith effort to work with the teachers' union and see if we can come up with an agreement.
Before we move on, I want to jump back a little bit. The Oliver, is there being open collaboration between the Oliver Elementary Upper Academy and Middle?
What do you mean by open collaboration?
Are they talking, sitting down, having talks about how the curriculum is working, how?
So they're going to be in separate buildings, but they have submitted an SRG application together. So the dollars that they may receive from the state based on the strength of their application is about work that was done together and a plan that was submitted with each other. I would say that we've asked Mr. Ed Renozo, who's currently at the Leonard 7th and 8th Grade, working with Unlocking Potential, with the 7th and 8th Grade Leonard students, and worked with Unlocking Potential 6th Grade, to move over to the Oliver and work with the 7th and 8th Grade students next year. Remember, Unlocking Potential is only taking grade 6. And then the LTU Partnership School will be moved to the old Oliver building.
What about the 7th and 8th Grade teachers after they take over?
They have the opportunity to join Unlocking Potential if there's a fit. They have an opportunity to be absorbed somewhere else in the district if they're performing at a high level. And obviously, if they're not performing, we may try to counsel them out. But for the most part, like at the Leonard this year, teachers are being absorbed into the school district.
Principal for 7th and 8th, Ed Renozo, for the Oliver, will there be a separate principal for the 6th grade?
There will be, as paid for by the SRG grant. That's part of that short-term kind of additional funding that comes into schools that fall into level four status.
So-
But that's a one-year position, and then the Unlocking Potential principal will take the entire building.
So that being said, same thing happened with the Leonard 6th grade, they currently have a separate principal, 7th and 8th is Ed.
Yeah.
And then so Ed's just moving and they're eliminating the principal position.
That's correct. So there'll be one principal at the Leonard, what was the Leonard, which is now Unlocking Potential, 6th, 7th, and 8th next year. And we'll do the same transition at the Oliver middle grades as well.
My question was, I mean, you spoke a little briefly about that we might need new buildings and also about the lease for this location. So when does that discussion start?
You know, I think it has to start sooner rather than later. It's something that's been on my docket now for several months. It's something that we'd like to come back to you folks with in the coming months to talk about. The lease, again, is not up till the end of next year. But I would respectfully say that it's something that needs to be discussed starting this spring and not waiting until January of next year. I mean, it's something that really needs to be looked at, particularly in light of the finances and the situation we're in.
Yeah, no, because I mean, once you said that it was up, you know, next year, that seems worrisome to me, especially trying to find another location in this city that might fit our needs. Or, you know, I, until Mr. Blatchford brought up the fact that we could have bought this place, I, it seems logical that if an opportunity opened up to buy this building, that we might want to take that or figure something else out.
You know, I've had no discussions with the landlord or other folks about that. But I think it's something that needs to start being talked about, both here and inside the district in the coming days. Thank you. Final questions? Okay, we're going to move to public participation. Mr. Molly?
Good evening, honorable member of the Greater Lawrence Public School Committee. When Honorable Mayor William Lantego in a bold and historic move went to the Commissioner Chester to rescue our 13,000 children in an era of the turnaround plan, our citizens want to rally around the plan. Our citizens are witnessing the positive changes in our public school. Our citizens appreciate our teachers in Lawrence Public School and their union in the collaboration between the teachers' union and administration in leading schools such as Oliver School. Show how important our teachers and their union are in rebuilding the Lawrence Public School in a turnaround plan. The most important factor is collaboration of the community and support of our teachers. And the union guaranteed the success of the turnaround plan. In a word of the superintendent rally, the most important asset invested in our budget is our teachers and the compensation system. Our teachers and their union guaranteed the success of our turnaround plan, and are motivating our community to rally around the plan. Let's move forward Lawrence Public School while support our teachers and their union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. I think that concludes. Anyone? Mr. V, are you?
Yes, I signed something and gave it to the lovely Joanie.
Come on down.
I guess she lost it. But I've been lost for years. Thank you. I want to thank all you people for staying. I don't know why you are here, but God bless you. Good evening, my fellow Laurentians. To Lawrence's only chance, have a good vacation. I believe this. I've been saying over, Lawrence's only chance to become a great city is in the Lawrence Public Schools. I was at Wendy's recently, and I met a young man. He told me he was thrown out of LHS in his senior year. He didn't graduate. He told me who the culprit was. I said, well, go see Mr. Jeff Riley. If he's seen him, he's seen him. I'll go back there and see what's happened. Totally was thrown out in his senior year. I told you, ladies and gentlemen, that the school budget for the school year 2020 will be over 200 million dollars. Has the educational opportunities for students improved? I got four calls from my neighbors, and they were saying, what's happening at the Partham School? I says, I don't know. He says, well, aren't you a school committee person? I said, a name only. I don't know what's going on. So she chastised me and told me she wasn't going to vote for me. I said, I said, you may not have the opportunity. One of the funniest things I observed was teaching at the Gilmette. Miss Dr. LaBoye, Mrs. Bergeron, Mrs. Rosengard, Principal Alberto Molina, and Betty Sipsey went into this 5th grade class. I was outside and this woman, young girl, was terrified. Six, seven people in there to see how she's teaching. I'm going to finish this story. After they left, I went in and I talked to the teacher. I said, what's going on? I said, your mother is a big wheel in the Beverly School system. Tell your mother to talk to the superintendent and get out of here. She followed my advice. I saved one student. Thank you very much. Have a good day and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Vittorio So. That concludes this public comment. This time, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you and have a good night.